How can, so. So it's not everything that whole like. Hardwood State. Great fact. The pardon gift that I always felt that had. Gentlemen, first person. Everything is probably the last but better. I say that not that. Home outside of the top line town. That's the trust working building ten years. If there's a problem. And so, so. And it's. Veteran firemaster. Does make sure that. That's wonderful. Uh, most question. That. John. Kenny. I don't know. Boyfriend. I would encourage this. Like this. There's any like. If this would not have been.
Appreciation from the Orange County Legislature. Congratulations Lou and thank you for over thirty years of dedicated service to the town people and and its residents. Thank you.
We should focus on the better people out. I know.
Anyone else? Okay, Councilman Corwin.
I'd like to begin. By making a motion that anytime Dan Depew's in the room that he speaks last. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Dan, that's it. Um. You know, I came here nine years ago. Very quickly, I learned. That Lou was the go to guy. Dan was supervisor, so I was very lucky in that sense. Had a lot of experience. And like I said, quickly learned that Lou was the go to guy, whether it was with OEM roads, water and sewer. Parks, veterans issues, all events that we scheduled and 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 put on for the town. He was, you know, our very own Swiss Army knife. And, you know, it's been said that, you know, it's, you know, what are you guys going to do? What are you going to do when Lou leaves? I mean, yeah, it's gonna hire somebody. It's not going to be a Lou though, you know? I don't think, I don't think we'll have another Lou here in town until, who knows when? But. I'm very appreciative of everything you've done for the town, for me personally, in helping me out. With my issues here in town and helping get things done. You know, again, we'll, we'll, we'll hire somebody, but just like when Lou Garrick left the Yankees, who the hell knows who replaced him, right? I couldn't answer that question. But everybody remembers Lou. Everybody will remember you too, Lou. You're the best, buddy. Congratulations.
So Lou, um, I'm obviously the longest sitting. Councilman on this board, and I've had the pleasure of working alongside of you and and picking your brain. When people say that Lou is a walking encyclopedia, it's no joke. Uh, ask him anything in any platform, in any area of the town, and he can answer it. And if he can't, give him a day, he'll find the answer for you. Is he, we would go to Lou and his best answer is, yep, okay. It's done. And. I think the the biggest thing. In in today's world, when you're working with people and and you interact with people and you see how those individuals interact with others. In such a demanding world, because we serve the public and sometimes it's, it's, it. It's respected, sometimes it's, it's. Appreciated and sometimes it's not. But Lou has never faulted in in treating everyone with kind and respect, and he was always a gentleman in his job. Always willing to teach the next person, uh, whatever they needed to to learn to get their job done, to get their. Their respected duties done. From the highway to parks to even the police. And, um, you know, as, as, uh, it was said, it's a sad day, but it's a very, very happy day. And I say that because you're walking off with with this. With with this appreciated sense of of all you've done for the town.
Miss me?
Yeah. Your reaction, chief. Yeah, but you're leaving us, you're leaving us. In a good state and and you're going on to to. A better and and a new future. You have good help and, you know, you're, you've always said this family first, and if you look in the audience, your family is there for you. It's always been there for you. And, um, we thank his family, everyone, Jackie, everyone for sharing and being able to give a slew. For all the times that he spent with us and all the times that he spent for the public, the town. The residents, our roads, our bridges, our parks are better today because of you. And, um. We thank you, I thank you, and I wish you all the very best of luck. God bless you with good health and a great future. Thank you again.
Councilman Geno.
Lou, um, being newest member on this board, um, not even four year yet. I got to know the ingrassias prior to that. And as I came on, you welcomed me in open arms. And just like every person here has said, you've been that go to person. For any question I've had to be answered, you either knew the answer already. Or you found that answer out. So congratulations on thirty eight years of serving. You're going to be missed. Uh, you're never going to be able to be placed. You know, your commitment to our town will never ever be. So for one retiring, I'm telling you. It's another future, it's positive future. Take a deep breath, wake up in the morning and realize that you have a beautiful family. I believe that we're not looking to replace you, we just look at someone who's probably gonna try to do your job. Um, I think if they tried to do what you do, they're not gonna succeed. Because what you've done in this community over the thirty-eight years, it's remarkable. Um, you've been part of this community from growing up here, uh, when Luisa, Luisa, we're not, we're not forgetting about you. Okay, I just wanna wish you the best of luck on the new endeavors that you have in the future. Um, I hope that I call you, you answer the phone, I know you're gonna be busy in whatever you're doing. So uh, the board and myself decided to get you a little token in your time in town, so we're gonna step up there. Got you a certificate and a little token of appreciation for your thirty-eight years.
Thank you.
Thank God I never needed anything, so I never came to see you. But Lou, from day one, you have um, provided me the support that I needed to do this job and, you know, you are a encyclopedia. I believe that we're not looking to replace you, we just look at someone who's probably gonna try to do your job. Um, I think if they tried to do what you do, they're not gonna succeed. Because what you've done in this community over the thirty-eight years, it's remarkable. Um, you've been part of this community from growing up here, uh, when Luisa, Luisa, we're not, we're not forgetting about you. Okay, I just wanna wish you the best of luck on the new endeavors that you have in the future. Um, I hope that I call you, you answer the phone, I know you're gonna be busy in whatever you're doing. So uh, the board and myself decided to get you a little token in your time in town, so we're gonna step up there. Got you a certificate and a little token of appreciation for your thirty-eight years.
Brandon, do you wanna speak? Try unmuting yourself. Brandon, do you wanna speak? Try unmuting yourself. Brandon, do you wanna speak? Try unmuting yourself. This certificate is a word to Louisa Junior, by the Councilman George Hunter Tom Boyd, who proudly congratulate congratulate Louis Ingrassia Junior on thirty-eight years of dedicated service to the town. Your hard work and commitment have left a lasting impact on our community. We wish you all the best as we embark on a new chapter in your life, dated December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Mission Ingrassia, thirty-eight years of service. It has the logo on the wall. Congratulations. Yeah, I guess what happened to Tom Boyd and my staff. That's awesome. Thank you very much. Brandon, do you wanna speak? Try unmuting yourself. Brandon, do you wanna speak? Try unmuting yourself. Brandon, if you wanna speak, try unmuting yourself. Keep trying. This certificate is a word to Louis Ingrassia Junior, by the Councilman George Hunter Tom Boyd, who proudly congratulate congratulate Louis Ingrassia Junior on thirty-eight years of dedicated service to the town. Your hard work and commitment have left a lasting impact on our community. We wish you all the best as we embark on a new chapter in your life, dated December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Thirty-eight years of service. Yep, spot for the bottle. Spot for the bottle, spot for the glass. Congratulations. Yeah, I guess what happened to Tom Boyd and my staff. That's awesome. Thank you very much.
What do you think, Lou? I just wanna say that to answer what everyone said. George knows and probably the only person in this room that can speak longer than Dan Depew if I want to. You get paid to speak. I've been this town attorney now for fifteen years and you and I have worked on countless, countless things together. And your encyclopedic institutional knowledge of this town is unparalleled. Even people who've lived here their whole lives, because of your dedication, because of what you've done for all these years, you know the ins and outs of this town better than anyone. And it's been a benefit to everyone who served on the board previously, the current board. In my tenure, when I needed something, when I needed to know something, didn't matter if it was water and sewer, it didn't matter if it was highway, anything about this town, you knew it. It was a phone call, it was an email, it was a discussion, and it is remarkable. And it is a loss for the town. Hopefully, you and your encyclopedic friend about this town aren't gonna go too far. And when we need you, you'll, you'll be allowed and I'm confident based on the dedication you've shown. Everybody will be here when you're needed, you'll be, you'll be here. And the other thing that you've done, the honor flight that you've been proudly serving with, and a little story that a lot of you don't know. One of the years when I was riding escort for the buses, you know, the motorcycle escort. Lou took a picture that I brought to him of my late father-in-law, who served in World War Two, and he wore it around his neck that year and basically took my father-in-law everywhere that the group went, to all the monuments and the memorials, and had pictures taken of himself to bring back and give to my wife to show that her father made the honor flight was extraordinary. Okay, who doesn't except this guy right here? And the legacy you're leaving is, as these guys have said, as Mark said and all of that, it's not, it's not possible to kill. It's possible to put someone in the position and hope that they can measure up in some degree to what you're leaving behind, but your dedication, your friendship to everyone here, including myself and your staff, it's unparalleled and you should be congratulated for all of that and thanked for all of that, and I'm glad the board did this tonight. Glad that I was here and former supervisors were here to, to show how much you mean to everybody. And I think that's really important for everyone who may be watching to understand how important and vital you've been to this town and continue to be. So thank you for that and thank you for your friendship. Thank you, I appreciate it. Yes, absolutely. Yes. So, so with my appointment with Police Chief Supervisor Ward, um, pointing to you as your introduction to the town. And this is, that's what we follow, like supervisor Depew, and Dan sort of needs, and he has some help. If someone is in charge of, acknowledged, not only public work, but also firefighting services. Lou served, and served for a long time in house, house firefighting, correct? Um, as firefighters, he was with the branch on the board. Um, and Dan was right, you know, the OEM office has evolved over the years, and I've been working with the a minimal amount of the services we perform with police-related, most of police incidents are solved rather quickly. If there's a crime, even a major crime, it's usually generally thankfully isolated and contained to a limited area. And OEMs have just gone in cases where there's a broad impact in our community. And where are those broad cases? The snowstorm, the hurricanes, I remember seeing in the OEM room, we were passing our helmets to officers because the debris was falling over buildings. And the one thing I felt comfortable leaving at two o'clock in the morning, knowing that Lou was staying, but they had gotten one, that's what I'm saying. Lou would be able to work with the police department, so many different departments. Um, it started with cars and equipment and then slowly the time evolved, you know, the different crime initiatives and programs. That's it over the years, Lou was always there every single quarter. Will, or nothing but respect, you know, will disagree with the encyclopedia term, people like they all have an knowledge of it. Lou's, Lou's, Lou's chat GPT of information that's now, we have a speech that our police meeting council members biannually, annually, it was coming in and just sharing updates of things that are going on in the community. And the police don't announce the knowledge of self-believing, they'll fix some things that are going on in our town. And, and they would always say, honey, you have Lou that because he's really wanna know what's going on in our town. So um, as the supervisor pointed out, there was a niche to the visiting, and again, it's quite a good start when you overdrive for me. And I hate to say this, but actually, so always mine, that's why I have the money to work that way.
Save the best for last.
Well, maybe funny because otherwise I don't get movies, so.
Yeah.
I would imagine that the neighbors and myself are always glad to have him full-time. Um, because there's a lot of grass removed, there's a lot of dirt removed, and I think we, I don't know if you know that, he's the only person that'll ever do that. Fast over and all, the other day, it's, you know, out there with the snow blowing, I thought, oh, good, I guess you're still living, you're too bad. So we'll be grateful, um, to have him full-time and it's just part of, um, what he has become. Could be because he was raised in a house with five women. Um, and we taught him how to be a big boy. So I don't know what else to say, he's a wonderful human being. Um, I'm sure that my hand over Bill's coming on door because he's my coffee and peace guy. I figure it's a small price to pay for what he has done for me, um, over the years. And I guess I'm the last of the Mohicans. Um, so I uh, I have the rest of your road sign put over my door, so if that means I'm not leaving anytime soon, because you may hand you the sign when I push out. But put the sign over the door, so I guess it was at the same, a little while. I'm glad my sister's here tonight, we're glad, me and Andrea, um, are here and, yeah, I love you.
Anyone else? Is Brandon finally got?
No, she doesn't wanna speak.
Okay, um, anyone else wanna say anything? With that being said, I would like to uh, stand up and give Lou a standard ovation.
Thank you, everyone.
Lou, do you wanna come up to the podium or you wanna go? It's up to you.
Okay, I'm good, thank you. This is, uh, this is my spot. So uh, so I just wanna thank everyone, um, it's definitely a, uh, it's definitely a bittersweet moment. It's a moment I've thought about for a long time. Um, when I started for the town, November of nineteen eighty-six, uh, we were laying uh, water main in Washington Heights, the town was hiring pretty aggressively back then. And I had the opportunity to come to work for the town. My dad was the DPW commissioner for ten years from eighty-one to ninety-one. And everybody told me, oh, your dad worked here forever, and I said, no, he worked there for ten years, he was a farmer, a farmer, for fifty years before that. Um, one thing I always like to say, well, there's a lot of things I like to say, I think you know that. But number, number one, the one thing I like to say is that you're nothing other than the people you surround yourself with. And I've had um, the great experience of surrounding myself with great people. And the old cliche, you know, uh, if you love what you do, you never work a day in your life. Um, I don't think I've ever worked a day for the town of Walker, I really don't. Uh, that'll get cut out as a snip now or a meme or something, the guy that wore it. But uh, but I was blessed, I was blessed by the fact I was raised in a house with, full of public service. My dad, my mom, um, my father started on the planning board, the zoning board, the school board, because the town councilman, he was the state assemblyman. Behind the scenes, my mother was steering the ship. There was five of us, I was the youngest of five. Um, four older sisters, I was the prince, I'm okay with that. Um, but at the end of the day, I was raised in a family that you were taught from, literally from birth, that you gave back to your community. Um, my dad was a fireman, I became a fireman. My dad was a fire chief, I became a fire chief. Um, my mother was volunteering all along, uh, in schools and PTOs and things like that when we were little. And then when we started to grow and my older sister, who able to take care of, you know, the rest, my mother went to work full-time because she had to, uh, not because she wanted to. And those were the traits and the characteristics and the attributes that were instilled in us as children. And then we carry forth through that, and I was also a firm believer, um, that public service is a noble and just calling. And I know what happens a lot of times, people say, oh, you work for the public, you couldn't make it in the real world, quote-unquote. No, no, the, our job as public services to provide for people things that they cannot provide for themselves. Road, bridges, water, infrastructure, things like that. And then at the end of the day, just get out of their way and get out of their life. That's our job, as public service. Um, and I think we collectively have done an amazing job doing that. Um, I always refer to we because it is a we, uh, operation, it truly is. I have had the benefit, I've worked for thirteen town supervisors. I started with Dennis Cosgrove in nineteen eighty-six, and I'm gonna end with George Serrano in twenty twenty-four. So over the course of thirty-eight plus years, I've worked for thirteen town supervisors. Dozens of town board members. Um, if I kept my back and counted, I don't know, I'd probably miss a couple. But what I always had, I always had the ultimate respect for the people that I worked with. I was always a believer in that we worked together, we didn't work for, we worked with. Um, along the way, of course, uh, you start to grow, you start to mature, you start to uh, set your life. Um, I had the benefit of literally building a house in my parents' backyard. Um, I had the benefit of falling in love with an amazing human being. Uh, we've been together thirty-three years now, we've been married for thirty. Uh, again, The Rock, you know, it's a, it's cliche, but at the end of the day, when I'm running out of house, twenty-four. You know, it's a, it's cliche, but at the end of the day, when I'm running out of house twenty-four seven. To do either fire calls or town business or things like that, I never had to look over my shoulder and say, okay, so house in good shape. Okay, am I gonna get my thoughts busted for being out? Because she knew that it was important to me. And then as we grew and we had children, she knew that it was important to them to see both of us as role models. My wife has worked full time since the time my children were born. Um, and like I said, you don't do any of this without the support of your loved ones, your family, that's where it all starts. I am blessed. I, and I tell people, the best thing that ever happened to me was marrying my wife. Um, a true saint, um, and we laugh about that. But we are not the type of, when are you coming home? Where are you at? Basically, I'll see you when I'll see you. And if somebody's not believing, um, we're okay. Um, and we lived that way in the past, you know, thirty-three years together. Um, we're blessed now, we have two grown children. This job, the town of Waukegan, allowed me to build a house. That allowed me to raise a family, that allowed, and I say me, it allowed us to put our kids through college. My son's a school teacher in upstate New York, General Brown, right outside of Watertown. My daughter's a school teacher right here at Harmony Baptist. Your legacy, Dan was talking about legacies, your legacy is what you're gonna leave behind. In a professional sense, you should, your goal should be to leave the place in better shape than you found it. And not that it wasn't in good shape when we got here. But that should be the goal. The goal should be to hand off the torch, let somebody run it like a relay race. When you're running out of steam, you hand the torch, you hand the relay baton out and the next person takes it. And that's where we're at, and that's what we're doing. Um, I'm looking forward to the next, uh, you know. The next chapter of my life, I really am. Um, I've got a couple of different irons in the fire. Uh, I'm gonna remain involved, of course, in the emergency services. I'm a commissioner in Howells. We're hoping to build a firehouse in Howells, that's gonna be an amazing project. I'm hoping to stay involved with the OEM, with the chief, and with Joe Andres, the coordinator. Um, but like I said, uh, right now, we're just gonna take a deep breath, take a step back. And, uh, you know, like everybody has said all along, enjoy life, because that's, that's really what it's all about. But the past thirty-eight plus years of my life, um, would not have been as fruitful, would not have been as successful. Would not be as rewarding if it was not for the town of Waukegan and every single individual that's either come through these doors, lived in this town. Um, we always talk about the one percenters. There's ninety-nine percent of the people out there that think you're doing a great job. But we always focus on the one percent, the one that's gonna call, the one that's gonna complain. And again, through the fire service, the emergency service, I did learn very quickly. That what seems very trivial trivial to you could be the most important thing going on in their life, right then and there when they call. And that's what I tried to do when I talked to somebody on the phone, some people you just can't talk to. Okay, we know that too. Um, but I say this to every supervisor I've ever worked for. George will say, you know, this person called and man, they were this and they were that and they said this and I said that. And I tell them all the time, remember. Thirty, whatever it is now, thirty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty others think we're doing okay. That's, that's the way you gotta look at it. Um, my glass is always half full, it will always remain half full. Um, I have been truly blessed. There's been a million better days than bad day, than bad days working for the town of Waukegan. Uh, this is a chapter of my life, one door closes, one door opens, but I can tell you. I am deeply indebted to and have gratitude for every single person I worked with. Every single person that I represented, um, every single resident in this town. And I can only hope going forward, whoever fills, uh, the seat that I currently sit in will do the same thing. Um, you know, you learn from, you learn from your mistakes, you learn from a lot of different things. But most importantly, surround yourself with good, good people. That's the only advice I can ever give. Um, Michelle Baker, my, uh, my quote unquote work wife, um, it breaks my heart to leave her behind. Um, you call me, uh, or you say I'm knowledge, I'm encyclopedia of the town. I don't do this job without Michelle Baker. Um, literally, and I've told people this, uh. Michelle's husband and I worked together for over thirty years. Mike retired now four years ago, right? Um, if no, if Michelle Baker had decided to retire four years ago with her husband, I might have left four years ago. I don't do my job without Michelle Baker. She's an amazing human being. She's brought tens of millions of dollars to this town and grants things like that. She's got about a year and a half or so to go. Um, but ultimately, that's, that's one of the bittersweet things about leaving is the people you work with. Um, the other thing, real quick, I also had the benefit of every one of my, what I call my DPW leaders. Uh, Water, Sewer, Parks, Highway. Um, we all started together. We all started at the bottom. We all started as labors. Um, quote unquote, at the bottom of the hole. And now we're starting to move on to the next chapter. And that's been happening. It happened in Water and Sewer with Tim, it happened in Highway with Mike, it happened in Parks with Jay. And what's nice is that we've passed the torch, or passed the baton to the next generation of DPW leaders. Uh, I think we counted the other day, since twenty thirteen, I think we've hired twenty-eight out of the fifty-six full-time employees in the town of Waukegan DPW. Um, and we can only look, hope that what we did is that we laid the groundwork for them to take this town to the next level. Uh, to take it where it needs to be, uh, fresh division, fresh blood, moving forward. And again, uh, allow them to lead the place better than they found it. So again, very bittersweet, um, kind of breaks my heart, uh, but at the end of the day, I'm not going anywhere. I have deep roots in this community. Uh, I plan on staying in the community. Might make a heck of a snowbird someday, I don't know. Um, but I am truly only a phone call away. I genuinely mean that, because that's what this town. And that's what every individual that represents this town today, and that's what every individual that's represented this town for the past thirty-eight years means to me. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Lou, now, we have a warrant. I wonder if we're gonna chance this, one warrant, motion to approve the warrant. All in favor? Next, we got public participation. Three minutes, agenda items only. Anyone on Zoom? Good. Next, we go to correspondence. Madam Clerk, do we have any?
We do. Uh, we have a, a letter of thanks from Charlotte Sheen. And it reads, on September twelfth, twenty twenty-four, my husband had a cardiac event in an indoor pool of the Wildflower Community. The police responded very quickly and two plainclothes officers had jumped into the pool and pulled him out. I had been holding him up in the water and doing mouth-to-mouth. They worked on him doing CPR and then he was transported to Garnet. My husband did not make it that day, but I am truly grateful for the quick response and help. My husband was retired New York City sergeant. Myself and my whole family are very thankful for all that you have done. Thank you sincerely, Charlotte Sheen.
Thank you. That's it? You know, you cooked, that's why. Okay, we'll start with the resolutions.
Resolution of the town, when the town of Waukegan approved the use of a portion of the town's American directly plan act funding to pay with the purpose of computer. Resolve the town control, A D S C N is hereby directed to account to be afforded two thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty cents allocation. On the appropriate schedules of the town's financial reports and in the sum of two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty cents. From the ARPA line to budget line A one two zero dash two two, for the unfortunate purchase.
So, hold second.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Resolution of the town, when the town of Waukegan gives the use of a portion of the town's American directly plan act funding for the purchase of the top seal trailer. And the remaining equipment to the Department of Public Works. Resolve of the town control, A D S C N is hereby directed to the town to be afforded twenty thousand dollar allocation on the appropriate schedules of the town's financial reports. And transfer the sum of twenty thousand dollars from the ARPA line to budget line, to budget line D A five five three four one. Mr. Coin?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Resolution of the town, when the town of Waukegan approved the use of a portion of the town's American directly plan act funding for posted sales in credit cards. Resolve the town, when the town of Waukegan is hereby directed to the town control, or is there to be to allocate twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. For its town's cost for the town in year twenty twenty-five. And account per se on the appropriate schedules of the town's financial reports and transfer the sum of twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars from the ARPA line. To budget line A one six seven zero dash four one three. You have a motion? Mr. Coin?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Vanell?
Yes, ma'am.
Johnson?
Yes.
Resolution of the town, when the town of Waukegan gives the use of a portion of the town's American directly plan act funding for the purchase of the top seal trailer. Resolve of the town control, A D S C N is hereby directed to the town to be afforded three thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And sixteen cents allocation on the appropriate schedules of the town's financial reports and transfer the sum of three thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And sixteen cents from the ARPA line to budget line A one six seven zero dash four one two.
So, discussion?
Yes.
The second for discussion.
Um, as this is the last resolution for the use of the opera funds for the public's information. Um, what we found in, in doing the audit for our op, opera funds and, and closing the books on it. Um, the person that's helping us do that identified certain monies that needed to be, um, defined and, and. Uh, in use before the end of this, allocated, sorry, um, allocated. And so these are, are funds that have been allocated. We have contracts for them. And so this will hopefully put that to bed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Resolution of the town, when the town of Waukegan allows the transfer of funds, hereby is all the town will give and all the values of the town control. To transfer funds in the question of the town to take the fourth town budget as well. From A three one two zero dash four six one, forty cent tax, seventeen thousand seven twenty-eight eighty-one to A three one seven zero dash four six. Seventeen thousand seven twenty-eight eighty-one. This transfer covers Axon Body Camera Cloud Store. From A five nine nine zero, appropriated fund balance, seven hundred dollars to A nine zero nine zero dash eight three, uniforms, seven hundred dollars. This increases the budget to cover uniformed boys and for parts and building, you know, the media. From A five nine nine zero, appropriated fund balance, two thousand six hundred and forty dollars. To A one nine one zero dash four three one, in terms of their liability, two thousand six hundred and forty dollars. This increases the budget to cover martial skill and invoices. From A five nine nine zero, fund balance, thirty-three thousand four forty-four fifty-two. To A eight six four zero dash four two six, solar money electric, thirty-three thousand four hundred and forty-four fifty-two. This increases the budget to cover cedar wood, solar, aluminum, twenty-four inwards. And from D A one five six, I'm sorry, one six five zero dash four, central communications, ICOM code. Two hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty cents to D A one five six, I'm sorry, one six five zero dash four. Central Communications, ICOM code, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty cents. This moves funds to cover outstanding ICOM codes. Invoice number one seven zero three zero seven. You have a motion?
So.
Second.
Mr. Coin?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Vanell?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Constable Johnson, you can start with the comments, and you don't feel like you last.
Alright, so, the building before our mission was in November. They had a hundred and thirty-nine commits. Certificates issued were a hundred and nine, public piece collected ninety-nine thousand and ninety-nine dollars. Aggressed seventeen complaints were carried out to nine hundred and ninety-three inspection. So, I thought it was a great job by that department for the guys and galves in there. The water and sewer, the, uh, water and sewer crews had repaired six water main breaks within the last month. Um, unfortunately, they do that without any interruption in service, so great job by those individuals. The results for the fourth, um, quarter water sampling for the total tri-halo methane and haliocetic acids. Uh, the results are in and the town is happy to report that they're all below the action limit. So, this means that we've had a full year where all of our results have been, um, you know, below the eighty parts per billion number, which is great news. And it is a testament to the hard work by all the individuals in those departments, um, the people that run the plants, the engineers we've been working with. Lou, and it actually makes it so now, you don't have to send out letters and we can actually probably get off the P A's, um. You know, watch this because our water quality is so, uh, well, it's always been good, it's just now that we don't have any locations that are above the action limit. So, a great job there.
Councilman?
Yes.
It may be, I believe, um, a resident suggested previously. It may be a good thing to consider notifying the public if these positive results. In a letter or a post on the website or something.
Yeah, we can definitely do something. Maybe put a statement on the bills that go out or something. That one costs the same thing for, for mailing. Again, just, we needed to have twelve months for it to be a record and now we do.
Now we're there, yeah.
Yeah, we have it finally.
Can't hurt to do that.
Right, so we'll look into that for sure, thank you. Uh, the employees are cleaning and doing the maintenance on all the valves in the system. This again allows for access during registered repairs, so things weren't done, especially for winter. And, um. Now that the winter months are here, we finally got some cold weather. Um, the water department would like to remind any residents, if you have any vacant or empty properties in or around your neighborhood. Just to keep an eye out and be vigilant, trying to throw open pipes or possible water running from structures, clearly that's a leak. And, um, you know, if you see or observe anything like that, but these are contacted department as soon as possible. Um, the water can be turned off, and that brings me into the next thing. We still, I know you know we've had rainfall, precipitation, but we're nowhere near the numbers we should be. The water levels, uh, underground are still a lot lower than, um, they should be at this time of year. So, if you see any of that, please, you know, let the water department know. And if you can, uh, you know, conserve water. On your own basis as much as possible. The tower drive water storage tank is, rehabilitation is underway. The work is gonna obviously depend on the weather now, if the colder months are here, but they are working forward. Waste water treatment plan, to clarify, uh, upgrade project is in the final stage, it should be completed very, very shortly. And as always, the operation and maintenance of these plants, uh, and facilities go on twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So, a great job, all the employees to make that happen. And I just want to say, uh, congratulations to Lou. Uh, you heard everything said before, but, um, thirty-eight years dedicating his life. Um, to this town, he's a great individual. I know he's gonna do much better things moving forward and hopefully get a little time to enjoy himself. And I would just like to say Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, uh, and Happy Holidays to everyone, all the town employees. Obviously, I want to say thank you for all you've done this year and other years, everything you do. Um, it's much appreciated that Waukegan is who it is, you know, for all of its employees, certainly not us on the day of. Um, we're only the supervisor each year all day, but we're in our day jobs. So, uh, a big thank you to all them and Happy Holidays. And, um, just say have a happy and safe new year to everybody and that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Vanella?
Well, golf course is still open, um, but during bad times, uh, the cold weather, they're not as busy. So, just remember you can always use the walk path to go ahead and exercise. On a final note for this year, I'd like to say, uh, have a happy, warm holiday, but also a gentle holiday. And, uh, wish everybody a brand new Happy New Year.
Thank you. Councilman Vanella and Councilman Allison?
It mu- it must be the hair, he always confuses us.
Yeah, very similar.
The glasses, the glasses.
I'll start with the, um, police. Uh, current staffing is at fifty-four full-time sworn staff. Uh, our rest record data is, year to date, is up twenty-eight percent versus, um, that's a hundred and. Uh, actually, one thousand one hundred and ninety-two to twenty twenty-four versus nine hundred and twenty-nine to twenty-three. Um, I, the Park and Summers is also up. Um, a, the parking summerson is also up seventy-eight percent um, for this year. And the, our next. The police community council, the next town of Walker Police Community Council meeting will be held on Thursday, February sixth. And will be held at the community center. There's no meeting scheduled for January. For our youth coalition on Tuesday, the police youth coalition hosted the its annual holiday party. At our community center supervisor Serrano and the chief and I were attendants to greet among others and Santa Claus as well as um, Councilman Coyne. Our youth coalition will be hosting a bowling party at Qu- at Quinn's Pins on Friday, December twentieth through six to eight P M. And the next youth coalition meeting will be held January twenty-first at seven P M. Um, commencing October first and continuing through able April first. Overnight parking is prohibited on public roads between the hours of midnight and six A M. Additionally, overnight parking is also prohibited the remainder of the year when more than two inches of snow accumulates within twenty-four hour period. Uh. As far as the drones that everyone has seen spoken about and um. Screaming that the aliens are coming, the aliens are coming. Our police department in collaboration with our partners at the county, state and federal level. Continue to investigate the incidents as they are reported. Drone incidents can be reported to us at eight four five six nine two six seven six seven. Grants tonight, the board, well, let me skip that. Uh, as far as D W I enforcement throughout the holiday season, the police department will have additional patrols targeting D W I violators. Um. This is our, this is from our new parks department supervisor, Mike Nye. Um, just goes to show you, we really, we really um. Did a good thing and and a smart thing and are very lucky to have him on board. Um, this is his, his report. The park staff has been very busy with the setup. And breakdowns of our Walk Hill community events. We have been working on fall cleanup. At our parks and town properties, the fall cleanup process includes trimming all plants, bushes, leak removal, blowing all the surfaces. Of the grounds and it's included the last cutting of lawns for twenty twenty-four. We have surfaced, surfaced all of our snow plows with, which include a fluid change greasing inspection of hoses and wires and lubrications. Of miscellaneous parts to prevent failures. We have installed our salt spreader. Into our mason dump that is assigned to the tunnel, town hall and P D facilities. Baker Road Park in Ride, Circleville Park and the golf course. Uh, ice melt buckets for sidewalks. Are now placed at all the entrances of the buildings, buildings A, B, community center and Circleville Park. And as of December fourth, all of our pickleball courts, tennis courts, volleyball courts are now closed for the winter. As we, as we have removed all the nets and posts. The new playground equipment has also been under construction for most of twenty twenty-four has been finished. Our Circleville bathrooms up near the pavilion Stevens Avenue and Washington Heights bathrooms have been winterized for the winter and are closed until the spring of twenty twenty-five. As of myself, which um, Mike nine. Um, I am thankful for my recent promotion. And with that said, I'm working on a few upgrades to allow myself and my staff to work efficiently. This includes implementing computer generated tables and chairs diagrams to the community center events. That I printed for my staff to set up rather than rely on verbal instructions. During the next few months, I will be focusing on removal work on all our town parks and properties as well as perform performing preventive equipment maintenance on our machinery. We will also be working on deep clean procedures within building A and B as time allows. Mike nine, parks department supervisor. I'm gonna send this to Jay. I'm gonna mail it to Jay. Yes, he is. You know what? Um. I remember where he started as a young kid and and he's always been so conscientious and and um. Of all the work that he does for the town. So he really, he really, really wants to do a good job and and it shows in just a report. So we're very lucky to have him. From our assessor's report, property tax bills are being prepared. To be mailed out. All bills are due to be paid without penalties by January thirty-first to the receiver of taxes. Renew except, exceptions will be mailed out on December twentieth to all the following town applicants. Low income senior citizens, farmers, disability with limited income. Not-for-profit organizations, forestry and numerous additional applications requested. All are due by March first, twenty twenty-five. Reminded to new homeowners to register for the start check by contacting. N Y S Department of Tax and Finance at five one eight four five seven two zero three six. Finally, the assessor and her staff would like to wish Commissioner Gracia all the best in his retirement. His experience and knowledge of the town is irreplaceable. Thank you for always being there to assist us. Best of luck in your next chapter. The assessor and her department wishes everyone a safe and happy holiday and a happy new year. Uh, as far as my comments. Um, again, congratulations Lou and and best of luck to you. You know, you, you, you're talking about, while you're talking, I could think of one thing that you always said. You know, yeah, some people are unhappy and and we experienced some things, some anger on leaf pickup. Uh, and and I've used this before. It's just leaves. It, it just leaves and we'll get to it. So um, again, I wish you all the best of luck and much success in your next um, future endeavor. Um, for the public, I wish you a very happy and Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Uh, Merry Christmas, Feliz Navidad, Buenata. Happy Hanukkah to everyone. And um, Happy Kwanzaa. And last but not least, for those Seinfeld fans, Happy Festivus. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Councilman Coyne?
Okay. Start with highway. Uh. Leaf season is now over.
It just leaves.
Uh, we finished leave pickup yesterday. Uh, if you still have leaves to get rid of, you can bag them up and call the highway department at eight four five three six one eleven oh six. We'll send a truck up to pick up the bags. A brush and compost yard will be closing for the winter after this Saturday. We'll, we'll reopen sometime in April. Uh, of course, pending weather conditions. Our attention will be focused on plowing and salting roads, so please be mindful of our plow trucks. Our drivers cannot always see you and they often have to back up and clear an intersection or turn around to plow the other side of the road. Please keep your distance from the back of our trucks. It allows the driver to better see you. Also remember it is illegal to plow snow onto the roadway. And all basketball hoops must be removed from the edge of the road, so our trucks. Do not run into them with the plower weight. We also ask that you park all vehicles inside. Your driveway during and after a snowstorm until you see that your road has been cleared of snow and salty. Please remember. Uh, you are responsible for cleaning sidewalks in front of your home and should wait until the storm is over. And your road is cleared of snow. Otherwise, we may end up putting snow back onto the sidewalk for you to clean and only have to clean again. When we're not plowing, we will be ditching roads and doing tree work as weather conditions allow. If you see a pothole, give us a call and we can temporarily patch it with coal patch for the winter season. Um, as far as comments. Yeah, congratulations once again, Lou. Enjoy your time. It's gonna be great. Uh, maybe we can uh. I don't know, get you back part-time doing something. We'll see. Um.
Twenty years beyond the equivalent.
I got other, I got other thoughts. I got other thoughts. We'll talk. Uh, to everybody, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Uh, Happy Holidays. Uh, twenty-four was a good year. Twenty-five is gonna be even better. So. Um. That's all I got for twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Um, first, I wanna talk about some events that have happened and some that are coming up. Uh, on the thirtieth, we had our holiday parade. Uh, Walk Hill went away up to the Macy's parking lot. Then we had a great performance by artistic dance. And then also we had the drone show. It was a great night. Um, a lot of people came out. It was a little cold, but people came out and it was nice. It was a nice event. Appreciate everyone that came out. Looking forward to for next year. Coming up, we do have a Kwanzaa celebration on December twenty-sixth at the Gallery of War at one P M. And right after that, on December twenty-ninth, we do have our menorah lighting in the head town hall at six thirty P M. Couple of things I wanna congratulate the water so department for taking the steps to work on the water. Because that was one of the biggest thing that I was always brought up and now we're back pretty much. Not that the water was bad before, but it never was bad. But now we're definitely within the range and I'm definitely gonna take that um. Residents um, advice and maybe put something on the water bill, put something on Facebook, something. Um, also wanna make a highway department, what they do. I had the opportunity this, um, we had Toys for Tots. I forgot about that last Sunday. Um, how we supervisors came by and with one of the new trucks. And I had the opportunity to sit in that truck. And I don't know how these guys do it. That is, and in the middle of a snowstorm, they're cleaning. If there's a minimum so, uh, snowstorm, please stay off the roads. Let these men and women clean these roads. That is, I don't know how they do it. That was a, I mean, the trunk is huge. And you know, I'm there with Lou and who's like. You need to go out because on this, according to what I've been told, uh, Councilman Valentin did go out. And didn't see him. So he can relate and I'm looking, not that I'm looking forward to a snowstorm. But if it happens, I think I wanna go out and see them working because I mean, that was wow. I, I am amazed again. All goes to Commissioner Gracia when he's done with our D P W. And I've said this before. I've had the opportunity to speak to other towns and uh events and see what they do. We're way above them. We're way above and ahead of them. We have our issues, but we're ahead of them. Um, so great job to uh highway department led by uh, Bill Fadun.
I got as far as blowing the horn.
Okay, I, I don't know if I wanna drive that truck. I'll be afraid. I mean, it's the wind, the, what caught my eye was the blades of the wipers. They're so small. And you need to look. Now I know the, the windshield is, you know, heated and all that. But those wind, those wipers are so small. And I know when I've driven in the middle of a storm. Trying to use those wipers. So it, it, it was great. It was, and I'm looking forward to. Hopefully we don't have none this winter. So um, December twenty-fourth. Uh, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, town hall will be closing at twelve thirty P M. So half a day. So if anybody comes, please have your business done before twelve. My comment is to my town board. Johnson, Vanella, Valentin, Coyne, thank you. Thank you for regardless of what's going on. We're all being gentlemen, having healthy discussions and I appreciate that. To my town clerk. Thank you. Thank you. To police chief. Thank you. Will, thank you. Commissioner Gracia, thank you for all your wisdom that you've given me. And you're right, this guy said that, this guy said that. So I wanna thank everyone for um, taking the time and we do this together. For the town and thank you very much. I wanna wish everybody a happy holidays. And before I say that, let me not forget my staff. Um, who has gone above and beyond. And they have, you know, we talk about what's being done for the town. And yeah, here I have three individuals who actually, you know, whenever we have an event are committed to make sure the event is successful. From Darlene to Larry to Mary Lou, thank you. Thank you for what you've done for the town and helping me get um, do what we do to make the town look great. Wanna say happy holidays. To everyone out there, be safe, Happy New Year. Enjoy, but most of all, be safe. With that, I will give it over.
I have one thing. Um, I don't know if we gave the amount for the warrants. Did, did we say that? Cause I want to make sure. Okay, so it's ten thousand two hundred. Ten thousand two hundred. Thank you.
Okay, Adam, go ahead.
I just wanna say thank you to everyone who helped us um. With the gift entry program that was developed. Um, we did satisfy twenty-five wishes. But um, when um, Barbie and Shane came to pick up the gifts. Um, they moved up our cart, I think, three or four times. I think George helped carry a few things out. And Barbie said, you guys always kill it. Um, so of course, uh, our first people are usually disappoint. Um, we go see great shopping and I'm sure George um, helped us finish up and um. Nancy Vanella, I think Steve wants to take credit for it when he can because I know that Nancy, Nancy did the shopping.
I give most of that shopping.
I just wanna say thanks to
I'll give it, I'll keep it to my wife.
And uh, pretty much everybody at town hall. I'm sure everyone knows I've had some health concerns over the last couple of years and this year, uh, knock on wood, I seem to be turning the corner. Um, but I wouldn't have been able to do what I do um, without the ladies in my office. Um, some days they get under my skin, but most days, um, I don't have to worry about anything. I know that the work's getting done. Um, if I don't get here, I know that they are here um, ready to do whatever we need done. Um. And I'm just, I'm grateful for that. I'm actually grateful for everybody in town hall because like I said, a lot of folks, um. I am the last one of the weekend. Gracia is here and um. Pretty much everybody here that I've worked with, I've known for either a long time or a short time. Um, and I know that I don't ever have to worry about anything um, if I can't get here. So I just wanna say thank you and I wish everyone um, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And um, the commissioner, um. He's the best in my book, so I don't think that um, he could be replaced. And like you said, you know, I'm trying to replace him. Um, but um. It's been a good, it's been a good, uh, I don't know, I don't, well, I think I'm about thirty-five years and a couple of years behind it. Um, but um, it's been a pretty road. It's been a smooth road and I wish them all the best and stuff. I don't know, I guess I'll have a full-time head man at town.
Thank you.
Still has, he still has good hair.
Yeah, so it's like Luke, I think it would be appropriate to move in, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's been a weird place for me, you know, the holiday season, the time of the Thanksgiving, but you know, we face some challenges here for the homeless fighting the marsh cases. But thankfully, overall, violence coming down. There's a number of promising. And we didn't see that. We were able to taper down the serious crimes. But it, it coincided with tremendous fight demand. Back in policies, procedures and partnerships and cooperating with different law enforcement agencies, prosecutors at the level. And with the maintenance and headway and it led to increased arrest. All the credit is in the clean on store. There's a great job, as I was saying, out. As the years wound down, what they did was drone incident now. We're going into kind of all for three, every year.
Yeah, I just saw that.
You know, we're investigating, we're investigating, we're talking, we're studying, we're balancing levels, we're balancing balance intervention. We have a task force put together in the county. And we're investigating. That is, we will identify um, who the drone operators are. And now it's good. There's a lot more drones flying, trying to see the drone. So um, I've seen it myself on tonight. Chasing one. So we, they turn in front of all the doors of the road, we design a test one on a very typical on the road. Such a drone that has built limits for the compound. Free travel on the air, so we can find the road, right? Um, and by the time we get our drone up, so it won't continue down, so it's just can't touch you. Nonetheless, if you ever report a drone fighting, we'll need to see the drone. Nonetheless, if you ever reported drone fighting, winning four-nine eleven, the N B R, of course. Six nine two six seven five seven, your drone operator, the one for forget drone, or without partners and initiatives. And, and we're always in the same time, you know, getting high, so, and bringing it restricted to them. We talked about safety at the holiday last week, it's so important, point out every single year. There's big towns on the road that are depending on the danger. Every single year, there's a big town on the road, right? Relating to how to help them to do. The extra grant funding, then the boards and the county, starting to try and help the people in July, this year. We're doing the earth tolerance checkpoint on the nature set. Steve, New Year's Eve, other days that are prone to people overindulging, we'll be out there in twenty-four one. And then there's those ones, and especially in the summer, so it's like, before you break fall, you know, it's happening. And then you're gonna be here first and then people going forward. And, um, once you meet this, you always get a success in the world. Don't lose mine on this, I'm not gonna be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Why shouldn't I?
Well, I was gonna drop the mic, but they're brand new, so I don't want to do that. Um, well. But, uh, no, just once again, thank you. Um, everything that's been said tonight, the only thing, my only request will be going forward. Is that you just give the, uh, the individuals that are scaring the ship, um, the same amount of support, same amount of respect. That you've given me over the years and this town will be in great shape for. For the next thirty-eight years and beyond. Um, the one thing I would like to mention, just real quick, we know there was something in the news, of course, this week about a, uh. A mastodon unearthing here in Walk Hill. Um, so they talked about the last one and I was actually with Dan, supervising a few myself on Bowser Road. Um, on that terrible rainy cold night, they were digging on the old farm, um, on the backside of the Gracia Farm. And they unearthed a mastodon, uh, like a tremendous amount of. Bones and tusks and all that happy stuff. So anyway, now there's another one that's been located here in Scottstown. Um, you know, they say that a third of the ones that have been located in New York have been located in Walk Hill, which is awesome. The only downfall is that Tom Nasrally, Tom Nasrally, who wrote the Bowser, the Bowser Road Mastodon. Story, you get an opportunity to go votes out there. Um, he swore up and down. That there was something on Foster Road, I remember he said that all the time. And it's just unfortunate that we lost Tom earlier this year. Because he would be the guy, literally on his hands and knees, checking that out, so, uh. This time of year, it's tough, you know, when you lose somebody throughout the year, um, like we've lost a lot of members of our town family this year. But just keep them in your thoughts and prayers and just remember that Tom, tonight, he's definitely smiling. He found out that they found more mastodon, uh, jaws, teeth, whatever it was, in Walk Hill. Um, he's probably cracking a, uh, Aspire Brewery Walk Hill Ale. Right now, if you're not familiar, uh, not a plug for Aspire, but stop down. And the Walk Hill Ale actually has a mastodon on the can because of Tom Nasrally, so let's think about.
I bet you he was there digging.
Absolutely.
In spirit and so.
Um, just to add about the mess, um, we don't know where it's at, um. Um, I'm hoping, I'm in contact with some orange and the state. Trying to figure out, at least, see if they will share with us. Um, where, and where this was found. They don't want it to be public, um, I understand the family doesn't want people going to their property. But I think, uh, as a town, as especially our board and, you know, our leaders, we should have an idea of where it is. So we're working on that and hopefully, I know John, um, Councilman Johnson is working on it also and hopefully we'll be able. Get an idea and, and hopefully, but I, like I said, the family does not want to be, um. Recognized, because they don't want people coming to their property, that's what I was told today.
Just remember, Tom Nasrally's dream was to fill in the atrium in the center there.
Yes, yes, and when that story came up, I was like, Tom. And when I spoke to Sherri about it, you know, um. She got a little emotional because that was, that was his dream, to put it right in the middle of the town hall, so. Uh, Tom, if you're looking down. You knew it was there. Uh, with that being said, uh, public participation, anyone? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, I'm making motion to go to executive. Um, we'll be back, we're gonna go to executive, uh, to discuss, uh, potential immigration. Um, town.
Are we, are we in slide?
You're live.
Okay, just for the record, the board. Came out of executive session at nine oh one on a motion by the supervisor seconded by Councilman Johnson. Uh, which was unanimously adopted. It was thereafter. A resolution of the town board of the town of Walk Hill authorizing the town supervisor. To execute a settlement agreement with respect to a pending New York State Division of Human Rights complaint. Human rights case number one zero two one three one two four. Uh, was voted to be settled on a motion by the supervisor, seconded by Mr. Coyne. Unanimously adopted by the board and certain board members, uh, made comments. And I would ask those board members in the order that they spoke to reiterate their comments for the record.
So I spoke first, um, I just wanted to state to the public that at, uh, the town, the majority of this town board. Did everything within its power, um, to protect the town. And we did our due diligence to ensure that the town and its residents and the taxpayers of the town. Were protected, unfortunately, um. It went a different direction, but, um, we did everything within our power, at least. The majority of this board at that time to protect and, and protect. The employees and the employee at the time. Um. Unfortunately, we have to now settle this and, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, I just added that, uh. By settling this case, we are protecting the taxpayers further. Because had it gone any longer, it could cost a whole lot more. And unfortunately, we, this is the only thing that we can do and the best. That we can do to protect the taxpayer.
Did you hear him?
Thank you, uh, just going to add that, um, we did everything we could in our power, the three members in this board that were here and assigned. And, um. We had direct in from several different attorneys, followed their advice, um, passed resolutions. And took every step that we possibly could to protect the town taxpayers from. Bigger lawsuit and a town employee at the time. And unfortunately, I have a hard. Hard time swallowing this because. I feel that because we did everything that we could and took the steps that we did to make sure we did protect the town, you know, we still end up here. Uh, but as you heard, uh, Councilman Coyne mentioned it. You know, should it go further and go to a trial or to a hearing, the potential for the settlement could be, you know, much larger than what we're currently facing, so. Unfortunately, we do have to do this, um, looking at the current. Residents and, you know, the current situation and the taxpayers, but again, I do, I do have an issue with it. Because, you know, I was, I was here to experience the path, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to, to state that, uh, uh, press release will be?
No.
Okay.
No. That being said, uh, motion to adjourn. It's nine oh eight. Nine oh eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.